Good afternoon to everybody. Good night for those who are in the east and good morning or good early afternoon for those who are big western from us. This is the special session to celebrate the legacy and memory of our dear colleague Martin Shelton. It's very, very important for us to have this here because Martin was a regular member since 78 perhaps? Or 80?
Certainly a lot of it.
Well, a lot of it, probably one of the records, a recordist of presences in ACTQG. And the minute we engage me and Lex and Chris to start this session, there was lots of, well, we adhere to the idea and this is the right place to do it. It's also good because there are seven people in the room, which makes this conference a hybrid conference. I can click that box now. And it brings a bit of record, the sense of regular life to, well, I should take my mask to give a sense of regular life. So we have here pretty much all friends, right? Not just attendees, but real friends of Martin Shelton. And there's also a bit of science, I hope, that will be presented in these three presentations. And without further ado, I'll give the floor. Well, I introduced already you three, right? The presentations first by Chris Brunson, right? On the analysis of British public house names. Danny's next?
Yeah.
And I forgot your presentation, sorry, but you are...
It's a GAM. I'm going to do a geographical analysis machine.
There you go. And Steve?
Oh, trains and organs and pubs.
Okay.
Three things close to Martin's heart.
Yeah, and very, very important to our daily lives. So that's very important. So Chris, the floor is yours. I'll be monitoring the chat. And after the presentation, we have time to not only discuss the relevant science that is presented today, but also to have some, well, a nice talk about Martin among those who are in the room and those who are somewhere in the world. Yeah? Chris?
Thank you, Nuno. So as we say, well, I'm saying here friends and colleagues, and I'm not saying that as two different groups of people, you're all friends and colleagues. So we are here to remember Martin and to think a bit about a lot of the things that Martin enjoyed. And that's kind of my motivation for this talk. So...
Chris, do you want to go to view? No, I have to, have to do zoom?
Go to...
Oh, no, sorry. Yeah, go to view. No, 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 it's okay, it's okay.
Okay, right, so...
Sorry, sorry, no, Chris, go to view and you're sharing but not in full screen.
Oh, I see, sorry, yeah, right, thank you.
It's very complicated for myself.
Oh, I guess you, yeah. Sorry, yes, right. Yeah, so what we intend to do today, how do you get these things? Oh, there we go, yeah, perfect, yeah. Is usually at the beginning of talks, I'll give a, you know, one slide that's about the motivation. I think the motivation for all of us today is pretty clear, but just to be a bit more specific, my intention in this talk is to try to make it reasonably close to something Martin would regard as an ideal talk, not necessarily because of the scientific concept in there, but because it's going to include some spatial analysis using R, but it's also going to include public houses, trains and cathedrals. And they'll pop up quite a bit in the talks today. And I'll kick off with some of those things. And I'm not trying to rank the order that Martin liked all these things in, but if you think he liked public houses, he most certainly enjoyed playing the organs to about the same extent. So couldn't get so much about organs in here, but I did manage to get some things to do with cathedrals. And I hope that this talk succeeds in this aim. So, okay, what's in a name? Well, particularly here, we're talking about the names of pubs, for those of you outside the UK pubs, public houses, they're essentially bars. But in the UK, there's a few things that are fairly unique about them. One is that, for example, where I now live in Ireland, a lot of pubs are just called something like O'Neill's Bar or something like that. They're named after a person rather than just being named after, you know, some rather more abstract thing. But here, we do have this. A typical name of a pub might be something like The King's Arms. A more unusual name, but one that's important in Manchester is Pebble of the Peak, and we were in there last night. But so you get these patterns in the, you get these names of pubs, but are there geographical patterns in this? And if so, can we visualize them? Can we model them? And are there any unusual outlines? And those are the sorts of questions we want to ask. And this is another example on the photograph here of a fairly unusual pub name. This used to be when I worked at the Morgan University in Klandaf, there was a pub called The Cowan Snuffers. Now, goodness knows why it was called that. I've got a feeling they just did it for a bet or something, but anyway, that's, so pubs basically in the UK quite often have names and they can be quite varied. So I was trying to find out some data about pub names. And one source we managed to find, I went to this open data site, which was basically a web portal for a number of data sets that were created generally by open data providers. And this portal called GetTheData.com actually is a sort of repository for lots of these. And one of the things it gave was the food standard agencies hygiene ratings for pubs. And although it's not a universal list of pubs in the UK, it's got quite a lot. I've actually seen some discussions where people claim it is a list of every pub in the UK. It certainly isn't. Myself and Steve Carver, who we'll be hearing from later on, looked at these pubs and we actually know that there's certainly pubs that we go to that aren't in there. But nevertheless, it's a reasonable, we hope, representative list of pubs in the UK. And what's good about it is you can combine that, because they give you the postcode of the pub, with the ONS's postcode directory, which is another source of data from the UK. ONS being the UK Office for National Statistics. And if you give the pubs postcode, like its zip code, then you can work out its coordinates in the national grid. So with that, together with that food standard agencies list, we managed to get, to put together a table like you see on the, on the section labeled Table Layout there. So we've got an ID for the pub, the name, and that's the thing we want. You get an address, but also the postcode. And that meant we're able to get the easting and the northing of the pub. And also it's got latitude and longitude and the local authority that the pub is in. So we've got a database of pub names. Now, as some redundancy in that database, we've got an X, Y in the UK national grid, but we've also got longitude and latitude for each pub. You don't need both because obviously they're just different projections, but the same information. But what you can do, I decided to work with the UK national grid, the GB national grid for this. And so I used R, again, something I think Martin would approve of, and I read them in as SF objects. That's a bit like shape files, if you're familiar with that. And the EPSG code with that was 27700, so UK national grid. As I said, not all the pubs in the UK are represented, and this is not a rigorous study of that. It's just more that I looked for pubs that I liked and occasionally some went in there, some were, but there were about 41,000 pubs in there though. And all I'm hoping for this is that it is a reasonably unbiased sample, and I might have to do some more work on that, which would probably involve going to a lot of pubs. The data's from 2018, so it's pre-COVID-19, which is also quite an important thing to bear in mind because obviously a lot of pubs weren't operational if we'd have done it in 2020, where a lot of them were shut. So that's what we're working with. And the other piece of information I used more for drawing the maps were sets of boundaries for the counties and the unitary authorities in the UK, just to put the pubs in context. So that map there is pretty much a map of pubs in the UK. Now, you can see, it looks like there's far fewer pubs in Scotland than there actually are. Part of the reason for that is I actually used an alpha value of 0.2 when I was plotting the pubs. So you've got more like a, not quite a kernel density estimate, but a sort of density map of the pubs. So that basically, if there was just a single isolated pub, it wouldn't be sort of bright enough to show up on that, on that map. But it's the only way you could see the relative densities, particularly around some of the biggest cities, to do that. But it does give an overview of their geographical distribution. And of course, there's a little bit of the extremely obvious in there, like that there's a lot of them in city centres and things like that. Well, fair enough, but that's pretty much what the distribution is. But it'll get more interesting when I look at some of the characteristics of the pubs. So, okay, what we're interested in now is what's in a name of the pub. And we're looking for certain types of pub names, and we want to see, are there any geographical patterns in these? So one of the things is that certain pubs seem to have names that are references to royalty in some way or other. And we use a package in R called String R, which can search strings for regular expressions and pick out certain patterns. So it's not exactly the most complicated textual analysis, but it is a form of sort of textual analysis here. And because we've got the name of the pub in our database, we're looking for the various following patterns in the names. King, queen, prince, and if it finds prince, if there's a princess in the name, that will come out as well because it's got the pattern for prince in there. And royal. So basically, we're looking for those names in pubs and to see where they are. And basically, we want to look at the spatial distribution of pubs with royalty in the name against pubs that don't have royalty in the name. And I don't know how well these images have come out, but basically, these are point patterns for pubs that are royal and pubs that are not royal. And again, I've actually deliberately not put all of the non-royal pubs in there because obviously there's all kinds of pub names, most of them aren't royal. But I've chosen this random sample of the same number of pubs as there are royal in there. So you don't, you know, it doesn't look like there's just a massive extra density on the non-royal pubs. And when we compare those, it's one thing you can see there is the non-royal ones, there's a lot more in the North East than there are in the royal ones. So although certain things like London's quite clear in there, you can see that there are certain places, certain dot patterns that appear on one side that don't appear on the other. And as I say, one of the most notable ones is the fact that generally speaking, royal pubs are a lot less prevalent in the North East of England. It seems to be one of the naming conventions. But let's look at this a bit more technically. Nuno did point out that there's got to be some science in this, so here we go. What I've done here is I've got a binary variable for royal in each of the pub names. And then it's just quite simply a 1 if the name matches the earlier pattern and a 0 if it doesn't. And so my model is actually, the probability of getting a royal name in the pub is a Bernoulli distribution, which is just a fancy way of saying a random distribution of either 0 or 1 with a certain probability. And it's a function theta of the location. So basically, we're just trying to model the probability that the pub name is, it has got royalty in it as a function of location in space. And it's actually, we use a logit model for this, and then we model the logits of the theta is a function of X and Y. So F, X and Y is a Gaussian process, which is very similar to the assumptions being made about the underlying trend surface if you're using Krieger. The only difference is it's sort of embedded in this probability model, so I won't go into great detail of that, but that's what I used. And the GAM function in the R package MGCV enables you to do that. And these are the results you get. The probability of a pub having royalty in the name, the higher the probability is, the more towards the yellow part of the spectrum, the shading is on the map. And I've done this as sort of hexagonal maps. And what you can see is there is definitely a London, South West, sort of East Anglia kind of trend in royal, royal names in pubs. And definitely the further north you go, it seems less likely to get that. And certainly also, it's not particularly high in Scotland either, unless you go right to the edge. But then, when I, just to double check that, you can work out the standard error of your probability estimates. And you can see, okay, a lot of the time, these accurate, these estimates are more accurate nearer urban areas. When you get right up into the Highlands and so forth, they are quite inaccurate because there aren't that many pubs there. So I wouldn't take so much notice of that part of the trend, but it seems there's pretty good evidence that they don't like putting royalty in the pub names in the, in the North East of England. And those are the other patterns in there. So the next thing is to say whether a bar is a hotel, an inn or a tavern. And so we map the most commonly occurring names in pubs and see for each area there, which is the most common. And what we do notice is that inn as a name of a pub, something inn, is prevalent in a lot of places. The bar is a lot more prevalent in Scotland. And there are one or two other things there. There's a sort of valley of, a sort of a house in the name of a pub in parts of the UK as well. There's some other patterns in there, but that's probably the most prominent one. And I've fit another model like that to here. I won't, I'll leave the maths out for the time being because of time. But again, we get a similar sort of pattern in pub names that you can view this, but this was actually a three-way one, so it's a multi-nomial model rather than just a binomial one like before. And you can see that inn basically falls off in popularity in bits of sort of East Anglia and towards the east of England. House is sort of pretty low everywhere, except again, in that sort of valley that I pointed out earlier. Bar is a lot more common in Scotland. So we've got again, another just sort of difference in the things that people call pubs as you move around the country. And there's the standard errors. So I mentioned something about trains. So what I've done here is I've got some railway track data, and that you can see there. I've got the tracks and the stations for all of the UK. And my question here is how near does it to a station or a track does a pub have to be to have a train-themed name? Well, the names I chose in the pubs were station, railway, train or locomotive. And my question here is can nearness to a train station predict the presence of one of those in the pub name? If we do a little plot of that, what we can see, I looked at first of all distance from the station, but also distance from the track. And things that were railway-themed name are the top two box plots, the others are the bottom two. And it does look as though, okay, things called station or having station or train or something in the name do seem to be a bit closer to the pub than otherwise. And we can also take this model a bit further by fitting a curve to that. So again, this is basically distance from a station against probability of having a railway-themed name. And you do get a distance decay effect there. And okay, the probabilities are relatively small, but that's because, okay, if you go to a railway station, there'll be plenty of pubs that don't have a railway theme. So really, we're picking out the railway-themed names and seeing how close they are to stations. And surprisingly, not surprisingly really, they are actually, you know, it's much likely to be a railway-themed name if you're close to a station. But what it also gives you is a sense of the fall off. So for example, it looks like the probability of picking up a railway-themed name drops off by about a third once you're about a kilometer away from a railway station. And although I fitted a general function to this, again, using a Gaussian process model, I think I could probably have fitted an exponential decay function quite, quite happily to that and picked up on that. Final question, what about cathedrals then? The theme words this time, Bishop, Mitre, Cathedral, Minster and Abbey, the last two being alternative names that some cathedrals are called, such as York Minster, for example, or Westminster Abbey. And I could have possibly put in the cross keys there because that's a symbol of a bishop on a shield, but I didn't get around to doing that. But Bishop, Mitre, Cathedral, same thing, let's see what the relationship is. And that's the box plot for that. It's sort of hard to see the relationship clearly in that, but if I do my fitted model again, you can see in this case, there isn't really, there is a slight change in probability, but it's a lot less marked than it was for pubs. So I'm just about done now. Let's see what my discussion says about this, what do I think of it? Well, it seems that the railway infrastructure in the UK seems to have a lot more influence on pub names than does the established church, which doesn't seem to have such a strong effect on the names there. But maybe some of these definitions of themes need a bit more thought, you know, let's be honest, I was playing around a little bit here. And well, one thing is that that might need is more qualitative expertise on pub names. There might be things that are named after stations or after churches or cathedrals that I've overlooked in my choice of the definitions of the names. And because this is a qualitative research, I thought that needs some ethnographic approach. And so I'm probably going to do that by going to lots of pubs to try to find out about these things. But there's going to be more stuff about pubs, cathedrals and trains from Stephen in a while. And one recommendation from this, quite seriously, in memory of Martin, try to go to an organ recycle at some point in the next year. Someone was brought up on punk and northern soul and very different music to organ. He did get me to see some organ recycles and actually, wow, I was quite impressed. So if you haven't done that, then I suggest you do that. In fact, if you have done it, that probably means you like them, so go to one anyway. So I'll stop things there. Thanks very much.
Should we go on to the presentation? Yeah? Yeah. Because I think the evidence that Chris showed is very solid.
Okay. I'm going to take a slightly different tack. I'm going to revisit the geographical analysis machine, the GAM. And I'm going to undertake a spatial analysis of some prescribing data. And it's really driven by, this was the end result. So what I'm trying to do in this talk is to kind of, is to go through some work that was done with Martin, but was very close to his heart. The work is, the work is published in a, in a book edited by Mark Birkin and colleagues, and it's called The Geography of Misery. That's what we shorthand it as. And it describes the changes in the prescribing of antidepressants. One of the co-authors is a guy called John Crombie, and he's an expert in psychology and also the medical practice around depression and antidepressants and so on. And it was, what was beautiful about this, this work is it took a number of years to come together, partly because the data was very large. We were using open prescribing data, which records every prescription in the, in England in incredible detail. It's incredible thematic detail, but not much spatial detail and not much temporal detail. So they are monthly records and they are records for each GP practice. And the, the work started when I was visiting Maynuth as an external examiner, and the external examining was done. That took a couple of hours, there weren't many students, we went through the, the process. And I had this data and we started looking at it together. And we had gone and got sandwiched, and in the end, we ended up split across three rooms. Chris was, I don't know if you've been to Maynuth, but on the top corridor there. And Chris was in his room, Martin was in another room, and I was in a spare room just the other side of Rob Kitchen's office. And even though there was an office between us, I could hear the giggles coming from Martin, oh, he was having fun. And so this talk, although we were, we ended up working on anti-depressant prescribing, this work is some of those initial, reflects some of those initial plays. And I think one of the things, I'll come back to this, is at the time, antidepressant prescribing was very close to Martin's heart. His brother was clinically depressed and not in a good place, and Martin was struggling. He was starting to have to manage aspects of his brother's life and his condition, if you like. And, and in a way, this, this work that we did together, and we did it, as I say, over another couple of years it took to come together, really meant something to him. However, I'm going to just illustrate some of the fun we had. Okay, so we, as we were playing with the data, we started to kind of muck around with different, with, well, I suppose with different prescriptions. And this was one of the things Martin came running through. He was kind of going, oh, oh, they're all, they've all got BNF codes attached to them and we can pull out anything. I've just, I've just folded the data over and we can see where there's more sort of laxatives and these kinds of things. And so he was looking at the prescribing practice of various sort of phosphate enemas and things like this. And actually, this work, this was a slide he sent to me for a presentation I gave at GL Science that was describing this work in Montreal. And this work continued, you know, for a few weeks, a few months, a few years. There was a famous flight we had coming back from a workshop in Rhodes, where we occupied the front rows on, Martin and Chris were on one side, I was on the other side, and we spent three hours flying back writing this paper. So it was, it was great fun. So this work is a kind of a homage to Martin. And Martin, he did like pubs, he did like cathedrals. He, he did enjoy railways. He also enjoyed toilet humor, okay? So I, you know, if you got Martin out of the classroom and you got him into a situation, you know, VIZ was one of his favorite publications. I still have a copy of, in fact, I should have put it up, I should. Martin gave me, he said, oh, Lex, you're going away on holiday, I've got something for you. And he gave me a VIZ, and it was a word search for VIZ, but it wasn't a word search, it was a turd search. And essentially, there's, it's a grid of words and you've got to find different combinations of words, of words that relate to feces. Okay, so I'm going to examine anal plug prescriptions. I'm going to use a GAM, a geographical analysis machine to evaluate multiple spatial hypotheses. And I'm essentially going to compare the incidence of small anal plugs against the population of all anal plugs as, and I'm going to see if and where the tight asses are spatially clustered. And for those of you that aren't familiar with the vernacular around a tight ass, it's someone who spends as little money as possible, they're a bit grippy with their, with their dollar. It's, you know, so they, they, this is again, playing into Martin. So the data, if you go on to the, I haven't put the links to the website, but they are there in the paper. But essentially, if you search for open prescribing data, you can go, there's an open prescribing website that's run by Ben Goldacre, he of, I used to write in The Guardian about medical things and data. But essentially, you can extract the codes for any, not only any kind of drug, every brand of drug, every, every package. You might just get some paracetamol, it comes in 500 milligrams, a pack of 30, that has it, and it's made by this company, that has its own code. Okay, so for the anal plugs then, there are kind of, there's two main providers, there's Peristine and there's the renew insert. And they have, they have large and small sizes and the codes identify this. And then by looking at the prescribing per GP practice, the prescribing rates, the counts of prescriptions, we, it's possible to determine the spatial distribution of those or to infer the spatial distribution of those beyonds the GP practices into the population by using data that tells you how many patients are registered over relatively small census areas, LSOAs, lower super output areas. So you can get an estimate of how many small and large anal plugs are prescribed per person over LSOAs. And so LSOAs are about 1,500 people. Okay, and, and this is one of the things that Martin was absolutely rigorous about, I would say, is that he, he, you know, a bit like the phosphate enemas, he didn't just kind of go, right, we found this data. He went off and explored, wow, it should be applied. What are the, what are the characteristics of the drug? What are the side effects? And so the anal inserts apparently are flattish permeable, which I think Martin would have appreciated. That's, you know, they essentially, they allow you to fart. And, and one of Martin, again, a homage to Martin, this is Johnny Fart Pants, who is a character in VIZ. Okay, so the GAM, it was developed by Stan Openshaw with Martin and a couple of others. And what it did was reflect a kind of desire to essentially explore, explore different spatial hypotheses. It was, essentially what it was initially undertaken to do, and I'm just going to have a little look, it was initially undertaken to do is to examine cases of leukaemia and to sort of explore the data and to see whether actually there were clusters and if there were clusters, how large and what their spatial extent was, what the scale of clustering was in different places. So essentially, what it does is it looks for clusters at different scales and where it finds them, it looks at them across multiple scales. So it's a kind of this idea of, of essentially exploring the data, exploring the counts of something, the observed counts of something against some expected distribution allows you to kind of, essentially generate spatial hypotheses, okay? So the, I used the D-Cluster R package to do this. And the key idea then that I'm looking for here was that I'm going to look for clusters of small anal plugs, of tight arses, at different spatial scales. And I'm going to search around each LSOA using different search radiuses. I chose to use kilometres, 1 to 20 kilometres and steps of a kilometre. I wanted to identify significant clusters, really significant clusters with a P value of less than 0.002. So kind of, you know, very, very confident about the cluster actually being so. And I'm evaluating essentially the expected, well, the observed counts of small anal plugs per person against an expected count as well, where expected is given in that way. Okay, so if you just look at the data there, we can see the expected and observed are not too different. I plotted these to the same scale. And if you were just to look at these two, sorry, to the same class intervals. And if you were to look at these two layers, you'd kind of say, well, I can't really see too much difference. But there are some, if we just examine observed minus expected, we can see there's some particular areas down in, particularly in the South West. There seems to be a very large hotspot of many more sort of observed small anal plugs than one would expect. And we can see similar kind of more localised patterns as well in the data. If we actually look at the clusters, we can see this is fairly kind of widespread. So the tight arses are everywhere. Well, I suppose what's interesting is, for me, there's a couple of things. The central London and the west of central London seems to somehow be, have no clusters. There's a very strong band running from Liverpool all the way up to Newcastle, right the way through the top end of North Yorkshire. And then various bits around the Midlands. But this is fairly, you know, this is fairly kind of widespread, it seems. We are a nation of tight arses. However, when we start to look at the kind of magnitude of the clusters, there's a couple of areas that come out as like, well, if we start looking at the cluster sizes and they're kind of decked, if you like, then actually the area around East London is what is, I mean, this is telling me everything I know about the population there. Yeah, there are a bunch of tight arses down in the South East. And also, interestingly, up in this little bit that runs from Liverpool through Manchester to Leeds. So, oh no, I'm in that population as well, okay? And so is everyone in this room, except for Harry, okay? And so there are some distinct spatial patterns. You know, I've identified some of those. There's a line from the North West to the East, to the North East. There's some very high levels in the London area. This could be, obviously, this could be associated with lifestyle, population characteristics. Actually, as well, prescribing practices, a serious point, prescribing practices are not even and homogeneous. And there are trends in prescribing. If you talk to people who know about medical prescribing patterns, the doctors don't all prescribe in the same way. And actually, that has local characteristics as well. So obviously, there's some further work needed to investigate these patterns and clusters. Okay, but GAM is an old technique. But it encapsulates some great, considered great aspects. You know, it's inherently exploratory approach. It investigates the scales of influence, which I think is a good thing. We've got this kind of spatial hypothesis testing that's actually embedded in it. And actually, it's undertaking really kind of local analyses in that way. And I suppose it's claimed to fame was that it was the first analysis to identify clusters of leukaemia with the data that were available at the time, with a whole load of attributes, okay? And if I think about myself, you know, the spatial exploration of spatial data was central to Martin's work. We know about his contributions. And this was very much, these ideas, this spatial investigation of spatial data was very much at the front of the work we did together, which is this book, this chapter on the Geography of Misery. And that, the giggles and the laughs and the fun we had and the bottom fun we had will stay with me. Okay, so valet Martin, I miss you. You may have to come out of the stop sharing. Are you all right doing it?
Well, follow that. Well, I'll try. Where are we? There we go. Let's go on to the last slide typically. No, it's all right. Don't worry. There we go. So get us back on track. I'm already. So this is called Training Sets and Train Sets. It's how organs, pubs and railways interrelate. And I've tried here too, with Chris, to merge both some of my interests and Chris's interests with Martin's interests in a thematic sense. So by way of introduction, this is obviously again an homage to Martin. And he had three principal interests in no particular order. Playing the organ, drinking lots of beer and travelling in between sets two on the train. So what we're trying to do here is by integrating spatial analysis and some Boolean logic, a little bit of fun with that in a minute, with data on the relative locations of cathedrals, pubs and railway stations, demonstrate how we can create a simple spatial decision support system. I guess you could put that little app on your phone, maybe, I don't know, which can be used to optimise the combinations of these three seemingly disparate topics. So the problem first and an approach, a problem in inverted commas, because I don't think it's really a problem, but Martin would appreciate it. The problem is how to optimise your selection of pubs for an evening's drinking and the number of beers drunk between the origin, the cathedral, let's say Martin's been somewhere on organ practice, and a destination, which is the railway station to get him home. And of course, what we wanted to do, because unlike myself, I don't think Martin was a great outdoors person. He did, you know, get the train, walk most places between the train. But it would be to minimise the distance or the time taken to walk between origin and destination, but also to enhance the experience of coughing a few ales using aesthetically pleasing pub names. So there's a segue from Chris's talk. So what I'm going to use here is a walking time model, which I've used a lot of my own research. After leaving Newcastle, I came to Leeds and started doing stuff on wilderness, which is, you know, fits with my outdoor interests. So I'm going to use Naismith's Walker's Rules here, constrained not by barrier features and vegetation cover and things like that, but constrained by streets and footpath network. And it's going to be terrain optimised, so we minimise the amount of uphill that we have to walk. But we are sensibly including a few barrier features here, such as open water. So no falling in the time and things like that. And then we're going to develop a simple Boolean overlay model, which will do a spatial intersection of maximum walking time envelopes from origin and destination with some textual analysis, choosing aesthetic pub names along the way, which have either an ecclesiastical or a railway related names. Again, building on the work as described by Brunston Harris and Komba earlier. The data sources are pretty similar. We have multiple sources here. So we have the pub names, but we also have this location of the cathedrals and their organs and the locations of the railway stations, which we've got from the OS. We've also got the railways. The road and footpath network is essential because we need to walk between origin and destination and the water areas of barriers and a digital terrain model from the OS Terrain 50 model. All these data sources are open source and freely available. I did, like Chris, notice that the pub dataset is not complete. If you look at this map here on the right there, you can see one or two suspicious looking holes. It is almost a map of population density, but it isn't. And I thought I'd put this slide in here because I thought, well, Dave Unwin's going to be watching, so I recognised some of these pubs. So famous climbers' pubs, which are not in the pub database, so.
Oh dear.
Come on, Dave, name the pubs.
Vanel and Dungeon Gill.
Yeah, Dungeon Gill.
And Vanel.
Vanel, yeah. Fought House.
Oh, Clack Aeg.
Clack Aeg, well done, full house. You'll probably not get this one because this was taken when I was a student before I actually met Martin, but was some climbing pub down in the South West. I'm going to have to do a bit more fieldwork on this one. Modeling walking times, we use Naismith's Walker's Rule. And this just says, a number of times I've tried to publish this in the paper and the editors come back and said, don't you mean 1982? I said, no, I mean 1892. Naismith's Walker's Rule says the distance that he did in this walk, which used to derive this rule, was 10 miles, total climb 6,300 feet, time six and a half hours, including Sean Holt. This tallies exactly with a simple formula that may be found useful in estimating the time that men in their condition should allow for easy expeditions. And namely, he says an hour for every three miles on the map, with an additional hour for every 2,000 feet climbing. So we can use the OS Terrain data. We can use the RGIS Path Distance Tool, which takes vertical and horizontal relative moving angles into account. We can restrict this movement, Martin's movement, using the road and path network and apply this Walker's Rule. We've applied it at a national scale in Scotland. There are Scottish Wildland Areas mapping. But we can apply it to how many beers, what's the distance between origin and destination in terms of time? So how many beers can we do? This is a Boolean bit, I think. So this is a spatial intersection between those walking time envelopes or polygons from the origin. And I said, well, okay, let's say Martin is prepared to walk 20 minutes from the cathedral to find the nice pub. But then he needs to be within 10 minutes of the station in order to get that last train home. And so this is a spatial intersection between these pub time, origin, destination time polygons. Obviously constrained by the time of the last train home. But we have this space-time term of what I've called a beer consumption opportunity index, or a BCOI. I've got to concentrate on my time home today, so I'm just going to have a quick one. So I've got to be one of these top ones here. So we can think about this as a Boolean and are our variations on the Boolean not? So in this one, the top one here, we've only got, we've not got long before the last train home. So this is probably me tonight. So we need to select the pub which overlaps, is in the overlap between origin and destination. Or maybe we've got organ practice finished at lunchtime. So in this instance, then, we could be pretty relaxed about the number of pubs and where we're going to select them. Maybe we're just going to have a couple with a burger because we've only got time to finish for the one pub. Or maybe that Martin, this occasion, is Billy No Mates. But you know what? There's a pub next to the station, so I'm just going to have a quick one before getting the next train. So some results. Well, you know, like Chris, I looked at ecclesiastically named pubs and I found roughly 1,000 in the dataset out of that 41,000. And the railway themed ones only about 446. Now, where I live in Atherton, there is a pub called The Station Hotel. And that is not in the dataset, a bit like those climbing related pubs. But what I did is applied the Naismith's Rule for my cathedral dataset and my train dataset, railway station dataset worked out the walking times from those. As you can see, these are in hours. The maximum time is 78 hours. And the railway station maximum time is 56. Obviously, Martin's not going to walk that far, so I just simply applied those cutoff values of 20 minutes and 10 minutes. And here's an example I put in the abstract, but it's in central London, where there's lots of choice. But the red areas are distance, walking distance to nearest railway station. The blue areas are walking distance time to the nearest cathedral. And the purpley bits are the intersections. If we look at some cities in particular that Martin may have frequented, obviously Newcastle is a Johnny lad. So the cathedral, I found two Newcastle cathedrals in the dataset for some reason, so clear error there. But this is St Nick's here. Yeah, station names and ecclesiastical names are a bit thin on the ground, so this is kind of problematic. Station east is over here, so why would you go from here to the pub and then back again? Question. And there were very few ecclesiastical, I mean, Blue Bell, you know, we had Bell as one of the kind of vaguely ecclesiastical terms for the church bell. So a little bit problematic, Newcastle didn't work very well. Durham worked pretty nicely, I thought. So we obviously have the Durham Cathedral, Nestle as it is in the loop of the river there. And so we have the Angel Inn here, over here. And we have the Station House not too far from railway station. So this works really well. Cathedral to the Angel, to the Station House to Durham Station. There are a few missing pubs in the dataset, the Head of Steam is missing. And so apparently this is a new one, the waiting room at Durham Station. Yeah, so we'll have to go and find out. So it's better, but it's missing some of the important pubs, I think. Let's go back to London. Lots and lots of choice in London. Works really well because there is so much options there. But plenty of choice. My eyes were sort of attracted to this one here, the Mad Bishop and Bear. I'm going to have to check that one out. Apparently it's a Paddington Station pub. Mad Bishop and Bear, what's going on? So just to conclude, in this paper, what we've done is we've tried to show how open data can be combined using spatial analysis methods in GIS and R. We've developed a very simple spatial decision support system, which aids the frequency and choice of pub, taking both walking distances, time from origin and destination points, and the aesthetic of pub names, which Martin would appreciate, relative to those locations. Yes, like everything else, there's no such thing as a no free dataset. So we're working with imperfect data, but it was a bit of fun. And there's some flawed textual logic and tricky names. I mean, so, you know, you're pulling out all sorts of oddities in the pub names just by using simple textual analysis. Future work, well, we could enrich this dataset with some information reviews from Hammer webpages and link that to the database. Perhaps we could crowdsource information on the range of beers available and beyond some other things. Maybe we could use ideal routes. So we could use backlink clusters from the Path Distance Tool to determine least cost paths and minimise the time taken walking and maximising opportunity for bringing the BCOI index. Other applications might be found in urban and rural pub walking tours and managing liquid refreshments on long distance footpaths, as I found out to my cost this year when I walked the coast to coast with my wife and arrived at one pub about five minutes before they shut, which is a bit of a shame. But there we go. That's that. So I think it's questions, isn't there, isn't it?
Yeah, thank you Steve. Okay, so I'll just take out the sharing and put everyone on the screen on the mosaic. And I invite everyone to open their video too. So how should I, yeah, gallery, here we go. Yeah, if you could turn on your screens. And perhaps we could start by, I don't know, giving this word to the audience first. I think relevant scientific questions can be emailed to the authors. I think we could focus more on Martin and, I don't know, say some words about Martin and your contacts with him. I don't know. How should we go? Alphabetically? Or who wants to go first? It's difficult, I know. Should I go alphabetically? Yeah? Yeah, I don't know what to go here. Who wants to say something?
Who wants to say something? Mike, please, Mike calls.
Well, post something in the chat.
I thought I'd start by showing this. Which is back in the days of the Regional Research Library, Martin, front page star, obviously. Look at the kit there. Look at the kit there, eat your heart out. Look on the inside, it's a bit of a rogues' gallery of Kurds people there as well. Difficult to recognise many of them. What, just a small footnote in relation to the, some of the presentations, I remember one of the early possible projects on the Regional Research Laboratory, we went down to Leeds where there was a new prescribing research unit and we actually had a big meeting where we set out the kind of spatial analysis that was needed mainly to, where the spatial analysis was a surrogate for social analysis by effectively using geodemographic approach. And we told them what to do and they described, this could be boiled down into B stages. One, get the data, two, analyse it, and three, have a big party. Sounded like a reasonable approach. Unfortunately, having told them how to do it, we never got the money and they did it themselves. Something I've held against Leeds University ever since.
Those are the side arses.
Thank you.
What's your next?
Okay, I follow then, follow Mike. Because when I first met Martin, I think, I remember Martin as what Mike just showed, the picture, you know, very young Martin. But then I was very younger, so I was 25, I think. I just remember Martin forever, wherever we go to, went to Mike's room, Martin somehow would come to chat. I think he chatted quite a lot, Mike, in your room. I don't know why, I hear, wherever I'm in your room, Martin will, will pop around and talking something that I don't understand. And I think one thing also struck me is in Lester's presentation, with those interesting words, I think used to be Simon Rabel and Martin, they go a lot, yeah. And talk about a lot of these interesting phrases that I don't get a clue, you know, as an international person, just came from Hong Kong, and then they talk about all these things, so I don't get a clue. But definitely a lot of giggling voice. But that's how I remember Martin, and he's so kind, you know, always really good, wherever I have a problem, I say, Martin, can I help? Can you help me? Yeah, he will, he will come and sort out the equipment or do something anyway, or tell me something to do, yeah. So that's great.
So let me pitch in with the Martin and Chris story. I first met Martin, I think, at one of the Regional Research Lab sort of get togethers, basically, it was at Edinburgh in about 1988 or 89. I know Peter Burnhill was there and so on, anyway, it was one of these, we had the South West and we had the Wales and South West Regional Research Lab, basically. So I think I first met Martin then, but the really memorable issues with Martin and Chris tend to be to do with booze, basically. And when I came back from America in 95, I must have had an invite from Pat Sahili to go and give a talk at Newcastle. And so I went to give this talk at Newcastle. Came or probably day return, I think, from London. And basically, after the talk, you guys would remember this, I don't, after the talk, which went down like a lead balloon, basically, because it was a mixture of planners who didn't believe in what I did and geographers who didn't believe in it either. And so basically, we went down to a pub which was sort of down a bit from the main campus towards the centre, not very far down, a big pub in the basement. And we probably had about an hour or so, an hour and a half. And there were quite a lot of people there, but Martin and Chris got drinking, basically, and I tried to follow them a bit. But they must have had about five pints each in about an hour and a half. You're listening to this, are you, Chris? I mean, anyway, yeah, so they had this beer and of course my train was due to go off, I don't know, eight o'clock or something, half past eight. And so they said, we'll accompany you down to the station. When we got down to the station, there were three or four minutes to go. So immediately they went in the bar, basically, and I think a couple of pints were down then. And then, because I think Chris lived in Durham, I think, or Martin did, anyway, you guys had houses all over the region. But anyway, they decided to catch the train with me and immediately we went to the bar, basically, and it was then Cannes, basically. I mean, they pitched off the train at Durham, basically, I don't know where Martin went, maybe back to Newcastle, but very memorable, the sort of the drinking episodes, lots of them too, and I'm sure other people have got stories to tell about those.
Can I pop in for a quick remembering of Martin? Just to observe that this session's been held as part of the European ECQTG series, that three of us, I think, were at the very first of those meetings. But it's only actually at these conferences that I really got to know Martin very well. Or in fact, the team that I used to call Newcastle United. And it's really a kind of plug for having fun, but working hard at conferences like this. They have much more significance, I think, than the man on the Clapham omnibus would actually recognise. And certainly in the case of the kind of work that we all, in my case, have done, and in your cases do, it's absolutely critical that we keep them going, it seems to me. Without the ECQTG meetings, I don't think I would have known Martin as well as ultimately I did. So big plug for these conferences there.
Totally, yeah.
Okay, let's go in the room then. Yeah, who wants to go first in the room? Yeah?
I'll just say, my first recollection of Martin was being interviewed from a PhD position. The last question that was asked at the interview after everything was, Martin popped up with, do you like beer? And I thought for a minute, I thought, do I say something kind of mild and so, well, you know, just a one on?
Occasionally.
Occasionally. And I said, yeah, of course I do. Right, that's, scribbled it down on a piece of paper and I got the job anyway.
Lex, your camera.
Yes.
So this is, follows on from what Mike said, so Mike, it's Richard here. I forgot to bring my GIMES manual across from my office across the road here, but I think when you referred to meeting with Martin, that was the first time I met you, I think in, what was it, 1996, I think? Anyway, Martin taught me, first taught me GIS as a second year undergraduate in planning at Newcastle. I think Tony, who I can see on the call as well, taught me as well up there and Stan taught me. But it was Martin, really, who got me into the practical aspects of doing GIS. And as I said, taught me GIMES over 30 years ago. So it's, yeah, really kind of missed him and thought a lot about him over the last year. But it's great to see lots of familiar faces on here, Sarah Finn, how are you? But yes, I still keep that GIMES manual, even though I don't think GIMES exists anymore.
There'll be an emulator.
Get a private home. But yeah, I think if it wasn't for Martin and then Chris a few years later and my terrible Italian, which meant I didn't go on an Erasmus exchange and instead took a GIS option, that if it wasn't for that, I wouldn't be here today. Anyway, good to see you.
Oh, Tony.
Say something?
Yeah, yeah, sure, go ahead.
I was, even in my young days, I wasn't ever up to following Martin around in the evening through pubs and so on. My main memories of Martin are basically how helpful he always was. My main interest in geography has been analysing data, but I have no statistical skills at all. And so Martin was really useful in those early years when he was in Newcastle. Since then, my output has probably fallen away on that side quite a bit. I really appreciate that, I mean, it was, it was not just helping me, it was helping everyone and particularly helping students in their projects and stuff like that, he just, he just went on and on doing it, it was marvellous.
I can just say, Chris Bronson here, hi Tony. I can just vouch for the fact that he carried on doing that right until, you know, when he left Maynuth. So he was always doing that, there was always a constant queue outside his, outside his office. And he seems to have a sort of infinite well of patience and ability to help people, so I would totally agree with that.
I think further than that, I haven't known Martin for as long as most of the people on this call. I met him at JISROCK in 2011 and, you know, like Dave said, I only ever saw him at JISROCK and Geocomputation, places like that. But as a young researcher, I was there as a first time PhD student and he was one of the few people who came and talked to me, I think Chris. And since then, you know, Lex has been the same, he fishes moral compass. And Martin was always someone that did that. And now I'm quite heavily involved in JISROCK and we always pitch ourselves as being aimed at, you know, we support early career researchers and it's the actions Martin and Chris, letting anyone come out to the pub with them and talk about organs and any silly things, as well as helping them with the research and understanding that is why he was so important to the community for me. And so that's something we should remember as well, his impact on early career researchers for so many years is a big one.
Can I say something? Yes, well, it's good to know, I spent the last 20 years thinking that I was the only one who couldn't cope with a drinking pattern. And it's good to know that I'm in good company here. And my solution was to go for half pints. It didn't go down very well, as you can imagine. And then I went even lower to half pint shandy. That was even worse, but anyway. And what I want to say is that, the other reason I remember Martin is that he or Chris had mentioned something about organ playing when I was appointed at Newcastle University, those early days. And I didn't have a clue what they were talking about. It's not a very Greek tradition to have an organ in the church. And then I remember, I think the first time I heard Martin playing the organ was at the graduation ceremony at Newcastle University. And I was as surprised as the students were when we were all sitting there and suddenly Martin walks in in his outfit and sits in front of the organ and starts playing and everyone, including myself, of course, the people who knew, knew, but the students who had never seen him this way before and myself were just flabbergasted. And I just remember how beautifully he was playing the organ. And then I started going to rehearsals as well at the church because it was a great pleasure. So thanks for reminding me of this and thanks for organising this session.
Nuno, can I share a photograph of Martin, right? Sort of, okay, let me just share my screen, this is it here. Okay, so, right, well, I mean, Dave Onwyd mentioned, you know, the importance of the importance of the European colloquia. And this was in Budapest in 1993. And I think, as Dave said, several of us were at the very first one in Strasbourg. I mean, Denise was on the call and myself and Dave. And Tony, 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 were you there too in the first one? I can't remember. Anyway, okay, so, but this was 1993. And it was sort of, of course, the Berlin Wall had been down for about two or three years and so on. And this was the hotel we were in in Budapest, which was a sort of crumbling Soviet style monstrosity on the pest side, I think, basically. And as you can see, Martin and Chris and then myself there on the, on the right and Paul Longley on the, on the left, basically. And in fact, the previous slide actually shows another view of Manfred, of course, Manfred, yeah. No, no, European colloquia would be, would be, would be complete without Manfred. But Manfred's not here though, is he, at Manchester? And who's that on the right? That's not
That's Hubert Begum.
Begum, yeah.
Hubert Begum.
Oh, yes, of course, right, okay. Well, anyway, so I'm trying to resurrect some more slides, I don't know, we've got a thing next week in Maynuth. So I'm trying to resurrect more slides. So I had a word with Longley about the background here, he's definitely got a better memory than me about things, about Budapest. But that was a pretty famous colloquia, basically, as we walked down the hill and Paul had lots of stories about that. Okay, I'm going to stop sharing the screen and hand you back. Okay.
Anyone else? Before I, I'll share my own story, eh, Paul, yeah?
I don't have any, I don't have any story, but what I wanted to praise is the absolute friendliness by Martin. Many times, he was so kind with us, speaking English with difficulty, sometimes not understanding everything and he was kind in explaining and always saying very kind things, so thanks to him again. And I convey the greetings by Lina, who couldn't attend, and she regrets very well that she would have loved being there with all of you.
Noted, thanks, that is Paul's.
Hi, so I suppose I got to know Martin in recent years. He was my former PhD supervisor and I think I just echo what people said, that he's always very kind and helpful and I think his, his ability to be able to explain a complicated task and make it sound, kind of simplify it and be able, be excellent at explaining. And just have fond memories as well of the last EC2QG, where we went on a day excursion to Trier, which was, was a lot of fun, yeah, so, thanks.
Anyone else in the room?
Chris, go ahead.
Just a bit of a follow up, just a, I think a nice thing to recollect is at the last of these EC2QG conferences, Martin basically was the person that spoke, there's a tradition of these conferences, it's the meal for people who have represented him in each country to stand up and give a small speech. And I had realised that Martin had always wanted to do that and he actually managed to in the 2019 conference. So I thought that'd be a nice one to relate, so he spoke very well representing Ireland, he did a great job.
Thanks. Tony, please.
Just got a sort of technical question, really, it's in relation to the last paper by Stephen Chris. When you were doing the distance to cathedrals and railway stations, I saw you superimpose rivers on the map. And I was just wondering whether these were considered to be bound
Yes, yes, Tony. So the
We're in the cathedral on the station.
Yes, the open water data was included as a barrier, but the roads and footpaths, super, super sea are override that. So where there's a bridge, it's possible to cross. So basically in a nutshell, yeah. So you don't have to swim.
Before the pub.
Yeah. Yeah, 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 or you could cross the rocks in Leeds, I suppose. Yeah, careful falling. I do remember one little funny story, well, it was quite several funny stories, but quite often when we were coming back from the pub to check on GIS jobs in the lab, after the pub shut, we would get the munchies and so we would go to McDonald's or something and grab our pizza place and grab some takeaway. And then of course, inevitable, you need the toilet and Martin goes, don't worry, I've got the keys to St Thomas's Cathedral. So we go into St Thomas's, use the laboratory, but then we go, you know what, you fancy having a go on the organ? So we go, open the organ off, switch the organ on, eat our takeaways and tinkle on the ivories. So we go, put the organ off, switch the organ on, eat our takeaways and tinkle on the ivories.
Brilliant, Mike.
Just one more, perhaps an angle on Martin that isn't often mentioned. We had a young family when Martin was still around and he would come around and the kids can still remember some of his sayings, in particular, one time we all sat around, our young kids, we were playing a small money gambling game called New Markets, I don't know if anybody knows. Just played with cards. And unfortunately, Martin was persistently losing and we'd had piles of coins in front of us and he'd got down to only a 50p. And so the, one of our kids says, are you going to be putting that in in the next game? He says, no, I'm stopping now, that's good beer money, that is.
Good, so I think we can, because I'll tell my own story from Martin. Two days before I had to submit my PhD in Barcelona, we were together in the outskirts of Bari, the ECQG. And this was some European school of agriculture, nothing around us, we could not go for any place to a beer. And it was me, Chris and Martin outside this beautiful Bari September sky. And we were drinking beers and suddenly the beers run out and Martin said, I have something. And he went to the room and came back with some, two packs of the Crappiest Italian wine, one euro a pack. And I thought, I have to submit my PhD and finalise a PhD too, I should not drink this wine, that blinds you probably. But then again, I thought, this is good shot, we're always having good shots. So I remained drinking not as many quantity of that blinding wine as the Martin and Chris were drinking, but I still, the top was so great. And so that was one of my greatest memories of all these ECQGs. And it would be good that Martin was here, but it also is good for us to have all these memories. Thank you, everybody, for this time. It's a pity that you're not all here, so we're good, we'll go for the pub, to the public house. To have several semi, oh, I go as Sir Finn, I only do half pints with these guys because otherwise my kidneys start to hurt. And so thank you very much for your time today and this is recorded. The science of this session is recorded for the future. And well, thank you very much for this, thank you guys for coming and let's have a pint.
Yeah, thank you, Lina.
It's already got me very thirsty, so I'm going to toast Martin now.
Well done, Tony, well done.
It's gin these days, I can't take too much beer.
Have a way ahead of the game there.
Thank you very much. We see you around, see you tomorrow, tomorrow there's more conference, don't forget that, don't drown yourselves in beer.
I didn't know this was getting recorded, so I might have done a different talk. I'm big enough and ugly enough to cope.
And thank you, Denise, for listening to all this childish English humour.
I'm not sure I understood everything. You will explain next time. See you tomorrow.